Good afternoon. I'd like to call the special workshop meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It's now 1:35. The purpose of this workshop is to receive the multi-year capital plan presentations from our town departments. This is to review the five-year capital plans for 2017 through 2021. The first four years of the plan is really just a review of the five-year capital plan that we're operating under, the first four years of it. And you add the fifth year, which is 2021. I'd like to welcome members of the Board of Finance. Thank you for coming. And we'll start off with a comment from the Finance Director.
Okay. First of all, I wanted to thank my department that worked very hard to get this package together for you on time this afternoon. It's a big process. It's hard to understand sometimes what was on the back room, but it's a big process to coordinate. So I just wanted to explain to you about how we're set up here. In the package that I gave you, which are clipped together, are all the summary schedules. There's some documents there that you may want to refer to when the departments make their presentations. If you start at the very back, there are schedules that look, basically, they're individual department schedules. They are last year's department schedules that only have 17 through 20 going forward. So they don't have any, the current year, because that's not what we're discussing now. You can get a feel for the old projects and then any of the new projects. So those look like this by department, okay? And some of the departments didn't have any projects going forward, so they don't have a sheet, okay? But they look like this. They say from 2016 to '20. Also in this package is the complete plan from last year, all funding sources, including '16. It's the exact plan that you approved last February, and that looks like this, okay? It says fiscal '16 through '20, but it's the whole plan together, okay? And then, for your interest, I have some schedules that show you the projects that we financed by bonds for the past, over the past six years. Some of them are fiscal '17. And also, you have debt service projections. You have projects that have been authorized, but we haven't issued bonds for yet. There's a schedule for that. So there's several debt schedules here for your interest and review. And then you have the full plan, which is the very top two documents. There are two, because I filtered it. One is the whole, all funding sources, and one is just proposed general fund. And it says general fund proposed. They look very similar, but one of them says general fund proposed. It's just a filter of the entire plan, okay? So you don't necessarily need to refer to these during the presentations, but they're here for your review if you need them. And then these are, many of these are documents that both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance has been requesting generally, so they're here now. And so we're all set then.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Will it be a test?
What was that?
Did it really be a test?
A written quiz, I think. Okay. We'll start recording your schedule. Hannah, to me, environmental planning. Kevin McGee.
Morning.
Morning.
Good afternoon, I guess.
We usually have a morning meeting. It's afternoon, Kevin.
Natural Resources.
Yes, Natural Resources.
Okay.
Here to go over some changes to our five-year plan, two new things being added to it. One is $35,000 towards a proposal for a pickup truck for the Natural Resources Department, full-size truck, which has a bigger capability than the small loaners I've been using right now. And then right now, there's a conversation where there's trucks being getting rid of from Public Works, which we may be able to share. I'd like to hold this $35 into the next year's budget to see how that sharing process goes. The other big ticket item coming in 2017 period is for a utility tractor to assist with the open space projects and job descriptions that they have to do out there. The three tractor will come with all the different attachments for this price, which is a loader, backhoe, a mower, and a brush cutting bar to help take care of the edges of fields, create water diversions within some of the trails. This is a small-size utility tractor, so it's able to make it through the central trail of most of the reserves there, to help bring in supplies for work parties and give supplies for bridges and rock walkways across some of the wetlands areas. Right now, I'm not sure who, but there's a nice neighbor who's just kind of mowing a path around the East River Reserve. And at some point in time, we need to kind of take it over ourselves, and we need a piece of equipment that can handle that task there. The price also includes, looking at the whole package, there's also a trailer to transport the thing with, because without a trailer, the thing would be going slowly and be a hindrance on the road, getting to different locations, especially with Guilford. By the time they get there, they almost have to turn around for the end of the day. So it'll also include is a trailer to move the tractor with. The other, this year's budget, which I'll give a heads-up on, is the plan of metrics that's scheduled to happen this year. Received a notification from our SCROG, which indicated that the Capital Region Council of Government is actually doing, has a request out for a proposal for flights for Connecticut, which is starting up in the spring of this year. Flights we get, but there's a buy-in program for plan of metrics, which is using the flights to create the on-the-ground details that we're looking for. I haven't heard the price back for the buy-in projects yet, and that's in process right now, because I believe that bids are closed at the SCROG, or the Council of Government, and they're evaluating, interviewing the different people. So they won't, we won't have this input about the final cost for these individual projects until probably coming through maybe the budget season for the rest of the budgets back in January.
Yeah, you should have those by December, when we start putting our...
The next set of them.
The operating budgets together, yeah.
I'm not sure the timing, when they need to know what they need for buy-in. Like I said, it's scheduled in the 2016 budget for this. I'm not sure when they're looking in terms of if we tap the buy-in, when they start the flights in March of this year, or if it's something that occurs in the 2017 fiscal year for us. I'm not quite sure of that whole arrangement yet, and that won't be known, I think, until they set on the vendor yet. So there's, up in the year, but just letting you know that that item might be carried over to the next year.
Okay.
Because it's a grant, actually, the minute that you are awarded the grant, you can, it will be in that, whatever fiscal year that happens to be. So it's in the plan right now for '16, but it's not a problem. Whenever you get the grant, we just will...
Carry it through.
Yeah.
So just kind of a heads-up in the bouncing of numbers there, the finances there. So that's the things I have, two new big items that kind of gets to help the program along.
And you're proposing both of these to be in the 2017?
Correct.
And to be funded through the general fund?
Correct.
Okay.
My anticipation, correct.
And I...
Like I said, this is, the tractor is actually a smaller, the size are two up from a standard garden tractor, it's not a huge, big thing. It's a smaller size, sort of like the Board of Ed has for their operations there.
And right now, this work is being done by private individual, can I hear?
With some bid out, done out last year by private individual, which had, we had to fill in holes on the trails that we encountered. Other stuff, it's just not being done, because we don't have the equipment to do it yet. So to help facilitate some projects. Some of it's being done, but it's manpower to carry stuff in, and people kind of get worn down, so it's, help efficiency in the process.
Questions, comments?
Kevin, the difference between the John Deere quote for approximately $30,000 and the $35,000 request is the trailer?
Yeah, the 30...
The request is 35, and...
Yeah, the $5,000 is the estimated cost for the trailer.
Okay.
I have a question, and I don't know if I should address it to you or Kevin, but as part of this plan, do we, do you have any plans like to improve the East River Reserve trails, or is that all contingent upon getting equipment to do that?
No, we have plans on improving trails with the crew workers, the guys who've been cutting back some trails there. We're still, some areas were, I'm only down to one person right now, so there's some projects I can't do until I have a second person on to help move rocks around, to help with some wetlands crossings there. And there are also, for winter projects, the guys are looking, I'm looking at having the guys put some more kiosks together during the colder months inside the Public Works building to kind of get things up and going for the spring there. So if there's specific needs, things you see, let me know, I can look into addressing if there's other issues there.
Just as you spoke to, perhaps Public Works being able to, you know, wind down a truck to your usage. A tractor, from what you're suggesting, may have limited usage compared to, you know, something that's mowing full-time for the park and rec. Do you have conversations with the Board of Ed and the other departments, you know, that they're, they don't have machines that are winding down type thing? Or I don't know, I mean, this is the first conversation we're having with equipment this year, so have you had conversations with other departments and/or the Board of Ed?
Regarding their equipment, no.
Okay.
No. No, I understand, I understand the one that, the small machine that Board of Ed has is quite beat on, is my understanding.
So it's something we should be attuned to go forward?
Yeah. I mean, this plan gets approved in February, so you have enough time to do some more research.
Do some more research on it, and I think there's, with the smaller size of this, I think there's other departments which probably can be loaned out to for their uses there, where a bigger machine might be not appropriate for.
Okay.
Yeah, they make mid-sized ones, that I know exactly what you're doing, because I've been following Lantus a little bit with that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
They're perfect machines, those mid-sized machines, four-wheel drive, they'll go anywhere, and they'll, they really do the job.
Kevin, you might also think about a post hole digger to go on.
Potentially. We can add auger attachment in the future, yes.
Well, I don't want to get into equipment and everything.
But there's, there's pieces, once you, once you get on, you can always add on attachments that look like they're averaging about $2,000 a piece there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, you've got a mid mower here and a brush hog type mower, and frankly, from somebody that's done some trail stuff, I don't know what you're going to use a mid, well, maybe in the fields, if you want to just do edges of field.
Yes.
That's a separate issue.
The edges and, that we deal with.
That's a, they don't pop on and off.
Anything else for Kevin? Okay. Gentlemen, have any questions? No? Okay.
Would you store it in the Public Works Department, I presume? Where would you get it stored?
The, where our, basically, it's stored at Old Public Works.
Good. Okay. Kevin, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next department, Fire Department and Communications, Chief Herschel.
Good afternoon, Chief. Good afternoon. Okay. Basically, the only thing that's currently in the five-year plan on the general operating capital is the fifth year of the defibrillation, defibrillator payments, which is for $30,000. That's the fifth and final year. Everything else I'm giving you is our new requests. My vehicle is in need of replacement, it will have over 100,000 miles on it by the time we get started in July of the fiscal year. And the projected replacement cost with equipment is about $40,000. We're also requesting hose replacement over a three-year, three-year period, about $15,760 a year. We're keeping the apparatus longer than we normally do. The hose is now becoming out of its useful life, and we're starting to see a bigger failure rate during the annual hose testing, which is required by the insurance agencies, the NPA and OSHA. So we need to start addressing that. We're requesting a replacement of our 1984 two-wheel-drive ATV with a brand-new four-by-four Honda ATV or something of that type, which is about $7,869. This thing, we also used to plow around the, our complex, and we would use it also in the woods, which would be in conjunction with our 2000 ATV. We've had several incidents late where the two-wheel drive couldn't go where the four-wheel drive was, into the woods. And it's not the best way to operate. We're also requesting that the sidewalks be replaced at Fire Headquarters. The town engineer, Jim, was very nice to come up and give me an estimate of about $45,000 to replace all the sidewalks up there. They're all heaving, and we've made, thanks to Jim's crew and town facility, made numerous repair attempts. It's just not working.
Now, that's a fairly new building.
About 12 years old.
That old, okay.
Yeah.
Jim, is that the normal life for sidewalk?
No, usually they'll last a couple of years longer than that.
That's what I thought, yeah.
You're seeing the impact of salts that are being used extensively in the last 10 years on, with snow and ice removal, plus I think Charlie asked questions about the original construction, as far as the way it was set to drain and so forth.
Yeah, the patio was pitched to water trees. Well, there wasn't proper drainage put in, and the trees were drowned. So they lasted about a month. And then we had to remove that and put in brick walks, and the other was...
I remember almost immediately, the back sidewalk, the door wouldn't open.
That's right.
That's right. You were on the building to make.
Yeah, I remember we initially had, I don't know whether the compacting or what, just the building, because you wanted to drive in and handicap access, the sidewalks in the main floor are almost the same level, and just a little bit of movement between inside and outside. But I have noticed deterioration with the salt. I mean, that's just...
And especially the area where the patio is used for the voting, there is really something that, it should get pitched differently away from the building.
Now, are these, is $45,000 all, I mean...
All the sidewalks.
And that's just cut, breaking them up and re-concrete?
And that's to replace the concrete curb with granite curb. If we're going to do work on curbing, they too have deteriorated badly. The only thing that really will stand up to the corrosive nature of the salts is granite. Plus, we have Ron Green, it's been there 100 years, and you may have a few scars on them, but they still look good.
Okay. And the other thing is, we've got one more off the disc, replacement of two stretchers. We have, we have four stretchers, from manual stretchers to electric stretchers. The stretchers are five and seven years old and want to replace. Currently, two primary vehicles have electric stretchers in. It's just easier on the lifting and saving on back injuries. And the final thing I have is a request to replace three thermal imaging cameras, the existing ones that we've been replacing are in the average of 10 to 15 years old, and they cost about $10,000 each. That's all I have for that side. Any questions?
Anyone?
I mean, outside of the bonding stuff that's already in the, in the budget. We're looking to place a generator at the power site on Station Head Road. We were hoping to use the one that's there by a private carrier. They were going to allow us to use one circuit, but one circuit is not enough. The power of the equipment need to go up there. Currently, what we do is, is we run a, in the middle of an emergency, if the power goes down, we run a generator up there. And we would just rather have one that starts up automatically, and we don't have to worry about it. So the projected cost of that is $30,000. That's installed. These are generators self-contained, with double fuel tanks, et cetera. Replacing, I'm requesting also through the communications side of the house, which that's also a communication, is...
Excuse me, Chief, for explanation, this is to run the towers, correct?
Right, the power, for emergency services. Right, fire, police, EMS. That's part of that, what, the million-dollar, $3 million bonding project, where we put the transmitter site there?
Right.
Okay, it used to just be a receiver site, now it's a transmitter site. So it's important that we get some of that emergency power there.
And is this, this is also used by Valley Showers, am I correct?
Right, right.
Which is our new dispatch service that we're involved with.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. We're also through communications, requesting that we replace the phone systems. They're all getting up there in age. What started the Police Department is original to the building. There are no parts available for the system, so we're asking to replace the Police Department's phone system for $32,000. Requesting to replace the Fire Department's phone system, and I'm not assigning any times to these, for $35,000. Park and Rec, $35,000. Public Works, $35,000. Over the next three, four years, we're looking to replace. The phone, the town's phone system's going to go in hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get that done. This system's over almost 25 years old, and there's just no parts available for it. That's all I got, this is questions.
Questions? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I have a question either, actually. The communication towers income, does that come directly to the town? That doesn't go through the...
Yeah. Well, it comes directly to the town, and it goes into the land acquisition fund.
Okay, so that doesn't offset any of the costs of communications, otherwise it just goes directly into the land acquisition?
Yes, that's right.
And what is that currently, annually?
Oh, I'd have to look at it in terms of the annual, because it does change.
About $100,000.
Yeah.
About $100,000, yeah.
You said, replace the police and the fire? Because I don't see fire on here. Is there another $35,000 in here for fire?
Yeah, 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 there should be one marked fire.
Yeah, I didn't have the fire, but I can add that in, if I may know of that, so...
So there needs to be another line in here for fire, then?
Right.
And that'd be in what year?
Uh, I didn't realize, I checked off on my copy, 2018, but PD has more of a need than I do. Although, I got to buy my phones, I have to mark it also. I'll give you that one.
Okay, thank you.
Sheila, you'll give us the machine on that thing?
Yes, I mean, we're going to have these changes to, it's a dynamic plan.
Ken, for your information, we change these as we go.
So you said 2018 for five?
Yeah. I put the PD in next fiscal year, 2017.
I mean, you haven't actually gotten prices, you're just using the 35 figure as a general...
By talking to the phone company, and they already done a survey for the PD.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and that's the number that they, they said to use for next years, and I'm just, they traded by how many lines they have, or how many phones they have. There's 44 phones at the Police Department.
Okay.
Just by virtue of comparison, yesterday we approved 55 phones for the two-town halls, I think, for $30,000, right?
Yeah, close to 30, yeah. It's 29 each.
Yeah.
So...
Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next up, town properties. Steve Seidoff. Good afternoon, Steve.
Good afternoon. The items I am requesting are, first off, a new van, to replace an old GMC, which is small. The police, I believe, impounded it, let the dog, the warden, use it for years, and then it was handed down to us. So I'm requesting a full-size van, which will have the screen, side compartments, and a full ladder rack on top. Secondly...
What year is that van?
I think it's 1999.
It says 99.
99, okay. Okay, thank you.
Number two is town hall, down on the first floor. I'd like to do some oak trim and some wainscoting, just try to dress it up a little. I think it's needed something for a couple of years, and I think this would bring us into this century. Any questions on that one?
Like the, the hall, you mean?
Yes, yeah, the whole first-floor hallway, and I would incorporate the tax collector payment bench there to make it all, you know, match, and look like it was meant to be. Dress the whole thing up. Thirdly, youth and family services. I'd like to convert them. There's gas now on Graves Avenue, so I'd like to convert the boilers there to bring them up. You know, at the town hall, I'm saving probably 50% on natural gas versus the oil. So that would be for 2018.
Would that be coming from the other street, or can you come through the parking lot for that?
No, it's, it's right out on Graves Avenue now. They did it this summer.
Yep.
And then, social services, the same thing, is I already have gas running to the building, so that one right now would be easier. I also noticed on, I don't know whether to request them that way, or there was also a line item for ETF energy-related alterations, or if that would come out of there.
That's possible. We've done that in the past, and we could probably take a look at that after we have to review the whole and analyze the whole plan.
I just didn't know if that was thought, geared for anything else or not.
Okay.
Any questions on either of those?
The church and graves are running on oil or propane now?
The what?
Oil.
They're running on oil now?
Talking about youth, family services?
We don't use propane for any heating.
No, no.
Social services is on Church Street, Dave.
Yeah. Right. Fifthly, would be town hall septic pumps. I just wanted to move that from 2016 to 18. We had done some work on them this summer, I think they'll last a little longer, so we can extend that out. And same with the town hall fence, is we changed the way we plow the snow, so we're going to move that from 2016, I think, out to 2018.
And that was something actually I wanted to discuss with you, because both of those are already approved in your general fund operating budget, so...
I just wanted to move them back.
So we can, because it's already adopted, we'll have to discuss that, and perhaps we can substitute one of the new projects for the old and move the old into the new stuff.
And they're all in general fund?
The ones that Steve is requesting to move out are in general fund, right, for this year?
So we do the budget, we can switch that over?
We could, yeah, yeah. We can switch those now, even. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, we'll figure out how to make it work for you.
Have you estimated the savings in the gas conversion on social services?
I have not, but just based on people I've talked to in the town hall, I mean, it's 50%.
Then why wouldn't you be proposing youth and family services in the same year?
Because right now, I already have the gas line run to social services, so once you run it, they want it done within the year. I haven't gotten the gas line run to the building yet. It is in the street. I might be able to get it done on time, but right now, we, it's kind of a commitment with the gas company, is once you have it on property, you're supposed to, within the year, have it hooked up.
When you say it's 50%, do you have any feel for what their annual costs are now?
Ken?
$2,000, $3,000, $5,000?
It's, we super insulated that building, so it's not, it's not very bad efficiency-wise. It's probably $2,000 or so a year.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
So 50% we'd be saving $1,000 a year?
Yeah.
Right. Don't forget, that building was renovated eight, 10 years ago?
Yeah, it was right before I started, so about eight years ago.
It was brought down to the studs, I believe.
And that price also includes doing a new AC and stuff there, and that would also be more efficient. And there's some duck work there that needed to be resolved. There's some issues, and that would also be incorporated in this price.
This might also be something that comes under the Energy Task Force study and so on, which, as it was described, they might actually pay for it and...
-study and so on, which, as it was described, they might actually pay for it and-
It's worth looking, I just see what the savings are.
Yeah.
One thing to say fifty percent, but, uh-
The, uh, I see the, but, the proposals are sixteen and twenty-three, and the cost of the burners are seven and fourteen, is the extra nine apiece, is that labor, or what is that extra nine thousand apiece? My pleasure, request.
Um, are you looking at the top number or the bottom number?
I have no idea, to be honest, I'm looking at both, I'm looking at sixteen thousand for Church Street and twenty-three thousand for Graves, and in the back it says natural gas conversion burner is seven thousand.
Oh, that was for just burners, that, that was the upper part of the price, did you include the lower price? The upper part was just converting just the burner, the lower price on the sheets that I gave her were for a complete-
Yeah, I have that, so down the lower price is fourteen thousand, other price for natural gas furnace, one's for the burner, one's for the furnace, and I, so you add those up and you get twenty-one, which still doesn't-
Oh, the other was for, for just, you know, miscellaneous piping and gas piping and everything else.
So we have eighteen thousand dollars basically for miscellaneous?
One, one of them is fourteen thousand at the bottom.
Am I looking at the wrong thing?
That's, that's where I'm, one was for fourteen thousand, I priced it out as sixteen thousand because it was, I was gonna, while I'm in there, I might as well do a domestic hot water heater, and that's the extra two grand.
Yeah, and the other one, I see twenty-three thousand on the top page, and I see seven thousand on the detail page. I'm looking at the wrong thing.
I don't know what you're looking here.
Well, okay, so, what, we didn't put detailed sheets in for anything, um, past two thousand and seventeen, um, generally, because it's, um-
Numbers would change by then anyway.
Right. Right, so you only have the, the backup for the, the project with, for sixteen thousand, that you have the backup for fourteen thousand in your book, you don't have any pricing for the two thousand and eighteen project, cause it's too far out.
Okay, so that's just a nice to-
No, 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 no. This is the conversion, and this is the furnace and AC.
We can work out another time.
Two sheets on, and I went all off the bottom.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll adjust it, well-
Okay, I'll figure it out later.
Well, we, I may have to figure it out as well then, too.
Sheets each have the two different estimates.
Okay.
Okay, question I have, the year we're gonna deal with, seventeen, is that correct?
We, we don't know yet, we're gonna have to take a look at it. I, I was given the impression that, based on, uh, the backup that I received, that the seventeen was sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, so, again, this is just preliminary, we're gonna have a couple of corrects on those, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
So then you added two thousand-
I was trying to compare this to the domestic cover.
I think, I think the book is correct.
The book is correct?
Yeah, yes. Just keep in mind, you only have pricing for, for fiscal seventeen project.
That's what I'm concerned about.
It makes sense to go anywhere past that.
And just putting a placeholder number in there-
On the plan, yes.
They don't add up.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Chris, for his warranty, this is the number plus two.
Okay, Steve, anything else you wanna add?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Okay, engineering, public works, Mr. Portley.
Jim, how you doing? Good. Okay. Uh, Sheila and I went through the, uh, five-year plan, I didn't give back, because we just went right through, and I gave her the numbers.
I will give you a copy of what you, you have in agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
I have my own.
Jim's got a long list here.
Well, it's been a lot of work.
It's all yours.
Mine, all right. For next year, uh, twenty sixteen, new things.
Twenty-seventeen. Yeah, I took sixteen off, we're in seventeen, so it's, that's what we talked about.
Okay.
Maybe not in the same order.
All right, I'll go in the order that's on the sheet here then. Two seventeen, we had in last year, and it was gonna be part of a bond, the wash bay for trucks, I got a five hundred thousand dollar, that, that's all-
It's already approved.
Much time.
All right, uh, so we're gonna go by, throwing me off, cause I had all these color-coded.
I, I'm-
First thing that's new would be the electronic signboard, we discussed that, to replace that banner that hangs over Route One that's-
Not Route One.
Excuse me?
One that hangs over the green, green.
Well, that one too, but we can use it both places, that's a very, the, the value of having a portable, or a, a signboard that we can put where we need it, we can put it down here when we wanna put a note or a sign out there for people to vote, or to replace that, uh, the banner on Route One that lists all the activities in town, that, rather than have that banner there that keeps, the sports keep breaking. Okay, so I put a figure in there for fifteen thousand, six hundred. Put in a request for a new welder for the public works garage, we have an ancient piece of equipment there that's outlived, it's used for life. We have in twenty sixteen, John Deere loader replaces, uh, how low do we have, this isn't really what I, we talked about. In twenty sixteen, we had an eighth grader that was part of a bond issue. In going through this, we decided we really don't need this eighth grader, it's, it's something that, that reflects the time when we did a lot of dirt roads, we don't, we don't use it anymore. So what we're gonna do is move up one of the pieces of equipment we had for twenty-seventeen, I guess it would be twenty eighteen, this is throwing me off this-
No, no, I can, I'll explain it when you-
Yeah, because, well, okay, you explain it to me, because I, we had, we were, okay, this is, I'm sorry, this is what we did have, and I'm gonna go by twenty seventeen, that was previously in the five-year package, or five-year issue, was the, the, uh, the John Deere loader, okay. Then the new things really we're coming up with, uh, go down to pavement, Water Lily Lane, twenty, twenty thousand dollars, which we've made a commitment to, the people up there do. We have shim and overlay sections of Northwood Drive, that, the Northwood Drive is badly deteriorated, last couple of winters have really caused the road to heave and to, um, need repair. We also have, um, shim and overlay sections of Moose Hill Road, uh, I do have a hundred thousand dollars in a dedicated road fund for Moose Hill Road, so we'd be able to take that, I had sixty thousand dollars in the budget, so that would be able to come out of there. And then I had, um, the reconstruction of Surrey Lane, which is a, a road, again, it's has completely fallen apart because of the last couple of winters, and needs to be reconstructed. So that would be, uh, the, the road work, um, six-wheel dump trucks, there's two of them that we had, previously had in the budget, um, the, in going through the pricing, that the old numbers were, uh, lower than what we were realizing now, we go to bid, we put, we raised those, those figures up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the two six-wheel dump trucks. One's a six-wheel dump truck with Xander at Plough, replacing forty-four GU, and then the other was a Mack six-wheel dump truck, which replaces ninety-one GU, that's a, replaces a nineteen ninety-six truck, the other one replaces a nineteen eighty-five truck. So that's for twenty seventeen, uh, those vehicles were to come out of the, uh, general fund.
Jim, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
You started to talk about the grader.
Yeah.
Did you go back to that a second?
Yeah, that, that was in, I, I might, I had the old, this year, that was, that's in this year's twenty sixteen budget, it was in the bond.
Right.
We decided we don't wanna buy that.
Okay, so we're taking that out?
We're taking that out, what we, we originally had in the twenty seventeen budget was an excavator.
Mm-huh.
Our thoughts were, and I would discuss this with the Public Works Commission the other night, is that we would move the excavator, that excavator up a year, we used the bonding capacity that we weren't gonna use for the, for the grader, to buy the excavator.
Okay.
So that, there were leaves, you know, the, the excavator would've kinda come out of general fund, if we buy the, the excavator out of the bond, and it relieves the, the pressure on the general fund.
Is the excavator a new piece of equipment, or a replacement?
It's a replacement of the excavator we have now, and we would trade that in, uh, as part of the, the package to, to get a new one.
What dollars are we talking about?
The, a new, um, just went through, a new excavator is, is one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, but we feel we can get enough of a trade-in to cover that, between that and what the bond issue appropriates.
Because if the bond issue, that's already been approved, had actually a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for an eighth grader, but it really, we rounded that up, this is where it gets confusing, because we, we cover the issuance class as well, so that actually got appropriated for a hundred and forty.
Okay.
So now we're taking the hundred and, um, fifty-three thousand dollar excavator, but we're putting it in a hundred and forty thousand dollar slot, that's what we talked about. Okay, so that's, that's reflected here.
Okay.
It's reflected on your backup documents for the bonding as well, and one of the, I actually noted it, so you can-
Okay.
For, for best.
So, but the, the, you know, we didn't, we didn't see the need to just replace a piece of, we don't need it.
You don't need it, you're not buying it, okay.
Well, you know, in the past, we know what happens.
How's many dirt roads, huh?
Now we've used a lot of the millings to stabilize what were dirt roads, and it's turned out to be very effective.
Okay.
It's also a big labor saver, as far as we're concerned. All right, um, that's for twenty sixteen, that's the seventeen, looking down, um, twenty seventeen, uh, twenty eighteen, uh, we wanted to make improvements through some of the old garage doors at Public Works, we've replaced it four this year, and we wanted to replace four in twenty eighteen, these get banged up over a period of time. Twenty eighteen, we wanted to replace the salt shed, that was a, salt shed was, was purchased with the idea we were gonna use a conveyor system to load sand into it, it's a different time, uh, they didn't mix sand and salt back when that was set up, and it's makes it very difficult, we mix the sand and salt outside, and then we put it in by payload, it's a very inefficient system. We're looking at the old bald public works site, operating a little bit differently, and I'm revising the site plan to reflect placement of the wash bay on the site. If we put the new wash bay in where we want to put it, which is behind the, the garage is used by, uh, parking rec-
Need a little support.
We would change the, the way the, the site works a little bit, and what we wanna do is move that salt storage shed back, uh, to where it's out of the way, it's right now, it's plopped in the middle of the back section right there, it's a dome structure, it, you know, it, can we, can we keep working with it? Sure we can, but if we're gonna make the operation there more efficient, I think this would be the way to go. So that would be twen, seventy-five thousand dollars for that. Let's see, anything else we're gonna do that was new in twenty eighteen? That's about it. We set back some of the items that we were gonna do in latter years, that, some of the road construction projects, that really at this point in time are not high on our priority list, and we put them back to twenty twenty, and those were the, uh, the Nut Plains Road West, uh, extension, um, the Bullard Drive extension for two million dollars, and the Bear Hills Road improvement, that bridge, there's no demand for that right now, we pushed them out so that they don't, we wanna keep a, a place for them, so people are aware that those are things that were identified as projects we wanted to do, but we put them out to twenty twenty so that they don't congest the rest of the schedule.
Help over around.
Twenty nineteen, um, we wanna install a new lift at the garage, and we have a price in there for repaving the public works site is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That was, uh, the site, as you can tell from all the other public facilities, parking records, doing community center this year, they're, they're deteriorating over a period of years, and the pavements don't last forever, and if we wanna keep them functioning properly, we want to, in twenty nineteen, repave the public works site. By that time, we'll have the wash bay in place, we'll have, hopefully, relocated the salt storage, uh, shed, and then it's the time to then redo the paving. So I think that pretty much covers all of-
Do you, and this is really, I guess, your, your own personal opinion of it, but in delaying the bald, the Bullard Drive extension to Baldwin and that type of thing, I mean, I can understand, you know, maybe there's not a demand right now, but as far as the permitting process, would you foresee a, you know, a tightening of regulations and that type of, cause that requires a river crossing, right?
Requires river crossing, and which is-
I mean, are we jeopardizing the potential of actually doing that by delaying it, or is that just an educated guess at this point?
Really, kind of educated guess, and I hope that, you know, grant money will become available, that we won't have to carry that on town books, uh, we, we didn't get the Hubbard Road extension through grants.
Right, that's what I'm thinking about, the permitting process and the grant process, I mean, it's still, I can appreciate putting it off, but I mean, yeah, it's four or five years, permitting process could take a couple of those.
Yeah, um, realistically, to get that permitting process started, and it's a pre, and I can tell you from Long Hill Road, it's a very cumbersome process, because we, we have the Corps of Engineers permit because of the West River, we have the DEE permit because of the West River, that project's been extended out longer than I would have thought, because the permitting, uh, process is so long. It also requires, we require that we have a full, we gotta engage an engineering company to do that, we're not gonna be able to do that and operate without, within our own department with two guys, it's just not gonna be possible. You know, we're, we've been burdening our time with, with the, the work along the shore with Oak Quarry and Chaffin Child, and it would, total point in getting those permits. A permit for Bullard Road would require a lot more, and I can show you the reams and reams of documents that developed for Long Hill Road, so that would require an engineering company, which would mean we would have to upfront, on the town's side, probably half million dollars for that, to get those permits and get the design done. So rather than put that in our budget, I'd rather, because we've, we've lived with it this long, I'd rather put it off to the point where there is maybe some grants available in the future. And even that, if, if there are grants, that, that, that number would, if you were to ask me what it really would get a cost, I would, I would add to that, because I just, knowing the cost of helmet.
Yeah, the only point I'm making is that, you know, as we go forward, our regulation's gonna get tighter, number one, uh, and sometimes projects, uh, rise to the top of lists, when grants become available, the more shovel-ready they are. So my only point would, I can appreciate why you put it off, but I wouldn't put it off, you know, entirely, you know, keep it in your mind, so that, uh, I, I think it's inevitable, I mean, that's gonna be a valuable road when it goes in.
It's been on the books since nineteen sixty-one, I think we bought, what, the, the land from Henry Tishy?
But look how long the, you know, the, the other one was, and then all of a sudden it just popped up and got done.
Yeah. Yeah, and, but with that, with that one, again, we were able to, because it was included a grant, we included that in the, in the grant application, they, they paid for it.
Right, oh, I understand.
But I, I didn't just drop it off the list.
Okay.
And that's why I kept the two million dollars in it, keeping people memory that we, we have to, we have to do that eventually. You're right, I think it would be valuable road. As we go by, just like Nut Plains, Plains Road West, I think it's a very vital role for the future. I don't think we have the political will to do it right now, but I think at some point in time, uh, the town will need it.
Okay, good, any, any questions? Comments?
I would just throw, uh, I'm looking at a half a million dollars for the garage and two hundred for paving it. I, we've all talked from time to time that if you had to start from scratch, you wouldn't put public works where it is, at, at one end of town, I mean, is that ever a discussion of the Public Works Commission, of when it's worthwhile not reinvesting in this site, but looking at alternate sites?
Um, they did a study, I understand, before, uh, I, I came on board with them, that they looked at putting an auxiliary site in someplace else, they claim the study indicated there really wasn't any efficiencies to putting it someplace else. Having been through location of mu, uh, several municipal facilities, the old, not in my backyard reality always crops up, I don't care what, and we get with public works, it would be, be something that would- I don't care what, and we get with Public Works, it would be, be something that would, we develop a lot of resistance to matter where you want to put it in town. I don't see it moving there, from there. I don't, I don't see another place in town that would be centrally located. We originally had planned to put it up there where the school bus parking lot is now, before Hubbard Road was extended through. There was such a you and outcry from the people up there at that time. They were afraid of the, you know, contamination of the West River because of Public Works, such and such and such and such, and it went on and on. That, that was, that was dropped. We wanted, at that point, talked about developing a municipal, municipal complex on totally, total town land. We wouldn't have had to purchase the site for either the fire station or the police station if we had developed it at that point in time, and that didn't happen. So then, as, as backup, we'd not only purchased the fire station site, the police station site, but we also purchased the site for the Public Works, and all three of them were built with very little resistance. So that, as that background, I don't, I don't see it happen.
Anything else, Jim?
You mentioned the dump trucks, Jim.
Didn't we just, these, you say these are higher prices and bigger equipment than already approved. Are there, we have, do you already have approval for two trucks, and these are just larger? Do we have funds already set aside for, designated for this? And I see, I feel like we just bought some dump trucks too.
We bought a lot of trucks.
We did recently, right? Didn't we just buy a couple recently? Okay.
They're all listed on the, the previous bond schedule.
Okay. Okay, so this is a, a new, new request?
No, it's, it's an extension of the old request with, with, you know, the equipment for Public Works site was very old. So there was a schedule developed to replace all the equipment within a reasonable amount of time. These were the last of the trucks to be.
Okay, and then you've just sized them up a little bit?
No, they're not, they're the same size, I'm sorry, they're the same size, I didn't mean to give that indication. The price has gone up.
Price.
Okay.
I'm not, the, the sizes aren't any different.
The other thing that we've tried to do, Ken, is when we had so much equipment that needed replacing, we were bonding some equipment and trucks and trying to get away from that.
Right.
Just, just for his identification, though, that he should understand, there's a replacement plan, not just for equipment for Public Works, but also cars for the police department, et cetera. I mean, we don't, we don't wait till something breaks, breaks down before we replace it. There's a.
Unexpected life.
Plan for that.
The numbers that we're in here, Ken, are one hundred and sixty-five for the first one and one hundred and eighty-five for the other.
All right.
But as they've gone to bed, these trucks have become more complex and the price goes up.
Yeah, and the trucks have become more sophisticated.
Right. We've added stainless steel bodies and whatever.
Again, in reaction to, again, the salts, we, we've found that the, the use of salts and the, and the winter weather has caused it.
Materials are very corrosive now.
Quickly, as well as facilities. I think there's a price, I said this in the board select, but there's going to be a price to pay in the future for operations of, where rain just struck. We see on sidewalks that, like.
Anything else? Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
I had just one question for you.
Yes, sir.
But you're not done.
Three?
Sorry, I, I just located the other sheets from the original five-year plan. What's the reasoning for pushing Fairhouse Hill Road, which was pretty much set for twenty seventeen, out three more years?
It's the, it's the bridge of East Paris. That was the reason we just pushed it out. Because of the, the last couple of winters have caused real deterioration of our town roads. I think the money can be better spent repairing those roads than a bridge that, it's not, it'd be nice to have, but.
It's a lesser priority.
Lesser priority.
Sorry, sorry to come in late.
That's a good question, that's a good question.
All right, thank you.
Let's see anybody here from the Gulf first.
Go on to the police department?
Always skipping, always skipping the goal, of course.
Look like they need a break here. One minute?
Yeah, one minute, yeah. Mike, you might want to stop for a second.
You understand my email was just an introduction.
You want to take a break?
God, I've already gone back and forth.
Okay, next, police department?
Afternoon.
Afternoon, chief, how you doing?
Deputy Chief Dunn with me as well in the back, in case I need backup.
Welcome.
How we roll. Give me a car today. Appreciate the time. What I'd like to do actually is go, obviously, through our, our five-year plan, and I provided through Sheila our, our proposed budget, and I believe you have the, the spreadsheet in front of you. I don't know if you have it in the same format I do, but what I'll do is go through it year by year, I guess. One of the, one of the things I'd like to point out is as we went through the vehicle needs assessment, I had made some changes and actually reduced requests in years, fiscal years nineteen and twenty, because we reevaluated the, the vehicle mileage and our needs, so I dropped a couple of cars there. And as we go through the vehicle components, in several of the years, I've dropped, again, some equipment from the cars because we'll be at a point where, number one, we'll have fully updated our radios to digital, and those have a lifespan that would extend beyond this five-year plan. And in addition, being, having fully transitioned from Crown Vix to the Explorer, some of the equipment can start being reused, some of it cannot, but, you know, in a, in a small way, it's reduced some of our requests. So I just wanted to point that out, if anybody had copies from last year and was wondering what the changes could be attributed to. So in this next year, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, in conformance with our consistent long-term plan, we are requesting three patrol vehicles. The last three Crown Victorias that we have would be replaced with the Explorer SUVs. Along with those, again, because of the, the new platform of the vehicle, we would need to update the equipment, including the cages and the consoles and the laptop mounts, the graphics. All that stuff comes with a new car, especially in a new platform when you're transitioning and you can't reuse anything. In addition, there'll be one unmarked vehicle that will replace a two thousand and five Chevy Trailblazer that we've had, obviously, for over ten years. And usually, our unmarked vehicles last us probably between seven and ten years, longer than the patrols because they're not, they're not, not out there twenty-four seven, putting in as many miles as, as the other ones. The vehicle component costs include some of the lights and siren upgrades you need for the unmarked vehicle as well. So as you look at those costs for vehicle components, it's built into the equipment and the radio needs there. Obviously, for the unmarked, we wouldn't need radar, graphics, or light bar, so if there's any question on that. In addition, as we look at the building and the HVAC, we've talked about this for a couple of years now, and the number that you see reflected there is simply a suggestion by the Standing Building Committee after having reviewed the proposal by the engineering firm that we hired to do a long-term study on the HVAC status at the building. So the engineering firm made a proposal, I presented it to S B C for their input, and they whittled it down a bit, which I think is more than appropriate, and presented us with this long-term plan for replacing, without going into too much detail unless you have specific questions. The building is twenty years old, and some of the components in there just have a, you know, an end of life. Everything from the condensing units for the air conditioning to the air handling units, we have four air handling units in there. And so the proposal by Standing Building and as proposed by engineering is to slowly, a year at a time, start replacing the air handling units and all the ancillary connections that go with them, along with the, the condensing units for the, for the air conditioning. We just finished, and, you know, it took a little longer than we had hoped, we just finished an upgrade to the control system, which is a substantial upgrade, and worked on it throughout the spring and the summer, and it really made a huge difference with the balancing of all the, the controls in all the rooms, because as you recall, or may not recall from before, the problem was, in the, in the summertime, you might have one part of the building with air conditioning running, and someone has their heater on because the air conditioning is too high, and in another part of the building, there's somebody wearing a jacket because the air conditioning's too cold. So all the V A V systems, all the control systems were so outdated and inoperable that we moved forward with that, and that's been a success, and we appreciate the support to, to fund that. As we move forward with these projects, the numbers might go down, they might go up, depending on, you know, what those engineers say we're going to need to replace it. Moving down into I T data, there's two new items that weren't there last year. The first and the biggest one is the CAD upgrade, the CAD, and I believe you may or may not have a proposal from one vendor, which is where we got the numbers from. Obviously, we'd have to go out and explore other options with other vendors, but the fact of the matter is this. The CAD system that we currently run under was the initial computer-aided dispatch system that controls and records all of our reports, all of our dispatching of officers, all of our reporting requirements and submissions was, it's the initial program from nineteen ninety-one to be put in. Several years ago, if you recall, we upgraded that system when we, we found that we were falling a little behind with technology and the needs that the state requires on a lot of reporting systems. We're finding several years later that, that system that we're currently under is unable to keep up with the technology that we're faced with, with the state. Some of the biggest shortfalls are, there's a reporting system for the, for the federal government for, and the state for crime reporting. We've currently operated under what's called U C R, Uniform Crime Reporting, and there's been a transition over the last fifteen years throughout the country to try and get into N I B R S, which is National Incident-Based Reporting Systems. The current system that we have, despite our best efforts, the current CAD system that we have, is unable to accurately pull the numbers, the, the crime reporting numbers, get them to the state, and have those verified. So we're having big problems with that, and there's going to be mandatory switch to N I B R S in the short-term future. The systems, the other systems that are out there are capable of doing that. There are several tested and true that are currently operating with that. Another big shortfall is the lack of ability to integrate with January of fifteen's state move to a electronic submission of accident reporting. It's called the MMUC, and I'm not going to try and remember what that acronym is for, but it's mandated by the state that we submit all our accident reports through this system. Our current CAD system is not compatible with it, and we're one of a few, a handful of departments in the state that they had to develop a separate fillable PDF form for submitting these accident reports through. With the newer system, that's just one of the other enhancements we'll have, that the officers will get increased efficiencies on the road when they complete their reports. It gets submitted directly through that system. It's all integrated and tied into the state's systems, and we won't have a problem there. The other issues, if you bear with me. E-ticketing is something we're incapable of doing right now. E-ticketing is, if you've seen it before, hopefully you've not seen it before, but there's a capability for officers on the road to basically issue an infraction ticket on the road. There's printers in the car, it prints the ticket right out as they enter the information. All that information gets automatically reported to the state. In the current system we have, it's still a handwritten paper system in triplicate, where, you know, one goes to the operator, one comes down to records, and then you send one to the state, and our, for records ladies have to enter the handwritten data on the back of the form, and not everybody has the best handwriting here. So it's, it's going to have increased efficiencies for processing all that, that reporting information for tickets as well.
Some tickets can't be pulled.
Basically correct, yeah. And that's another advantage, don't bother, you know, it's an easy answer. Hey, can you do anything about the ticket? Absolutely not. It's been electronically submitted.
I'm wondering why Sheila's nodding her head like she understands this.
Well, I understand the technology.
There you go. She's up on the technology.
Brantford has it.
I do believe Brantford has it.
Yes.
Uh-oh. In addition, the, the biggest and most advantageous part of this for us is, I'll, I'll give a, a simple example. When we arrest somebody, there's a stack of reports about that big, and when you complete these reports, you have arrest reports, you have property reports, you have notice of rights reports, you have bond forms that you fill out, you have release forms that you fill out, you have property seized with a warrant, you have property seized without a warrant. You could have a stack of paper this big, and in our current system, it's either you handwrite it, and you write it over and over and over again, or when you put that, and I forgot about, you know, the actual arrest cards where the fingerprints are applied. In the current system, it's not populating all these other forms, and we're not capable of doing that. With this new system, you will cut down a booking process down, our guys have been seeing it in the other departments, and it's proposed to us from the few examples we've seen from our vendors, is you're cutting it down to twenty minutes from probably, what, Jack, an hour, hour, hour and a half.
So this could cut down on overtime?
Well, not necessarily overtime. It might, because a lot of times when we have someone locked up, we keep someone in there, but what it does is it gets the guy back on the road to do what we want to be doing, doing patrol and grab the next person. So it's, it's really a huge necessity for efficiencies, and I think it's an important upgrade for our systems. It's going to make it a lot easier for the guys to get their work done and get back out there.
It's, it's listed as a bonding, bonding item?
The CAD?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's how it's listed. So are you going into it expecting support?
Well, it is listed for seventeen as a bonded item, even though we're not planning on any bond issues, so we'll have to discuss.
We probably can move that to general fund.
Yeah. Right. One thing important to point out is if you see in eighteen nineteen, there's a request for an I series computer upgrade of four, forty thousand dollars. If we move to this new system, we can eliminate that forty thousand dollar request because that I series computer runs our current CAD system. It's a big IBM system. The new system runs off of, you know, the server, it's a server-based system, and the replacement of the servers, as you may or may not know, far less expensive than the I series computers that we've been replacing every few years to support this.
How long would it take to transition to a system like this?
They say three to six months. So, so what you'll, what we would have to do is, we'd have to continue running that other system for a period of time to ensure that the new system is in place, and we would need to run tech support on that one system for.
You said we were one of how many departments in the state that are behind in doing this?
From the perspective of accident reporting, I think there's seven other towns in the state that are running.
One of seven in the state that haven't done this yet?
Well, let me just clarify, we're one of seven in the state that doesn't have a CAD system that allows you to electronically submit accident reports through the MMUC, that's an acronym, M M U C C, through the MMUC system. So they, so the state had to develop a fillable PDF form for those few agencies that don't have compatible CAD systems. So it's not, it's not an over, they may have capabilities other than us in their systems, and I don't want to speak to that, I just know that.
So it is seventeen, because that's when the bill would become do and payable, but we might be working on it through sixteen, or we're just going to start the process at seventeen?
My expectation, my hope would be to start the process in fiscal year seventeen, so we could have it in place by the end of that year, however.
From what you described, I question why we're waiting.
Well, because we don't have the money.
Well, we're almost halfway through sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, we can discuss that. Can I ask a question? How many vendors are out there that provide these services?
There's about, in the state, and if you look at that, there's a map in that proposal that shows, there's about six vendors in the state. This map here, within that proposal, shows, the orange shows this particular vendor has those, those towns. It's a pretty substantial number without, throughout the state. They also have the state police and the Yukon Health Center, all the universities within the state. So an, an advantage.
It's in you, it's in his hand now.
An advantage in that particular case for that particular vendor, and again, we, we're going to explore others, but fact of the matter is, when they make an update or a change, it's going to be supporting a state initiative or a change that the state has.
Is the state police on this, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's another advantage. And again, I'm not selling this particular one right now, I'm just telling you we need a new one, and this is one of the ones we'd be looking at, and that's where I got the general, the general numbers from.
It's almost like every other town on the shore. It's like it was a plan. Went out to radar trap to...
Yeah, the other advantage is, it's an East Haven-based company, Branford, I'm sorry, Branford-based company, so they're pretty close by.
So, obviously, they're on it.
Yes.
Madison, Branford, North Branford.
None of the cities are on it. None of the big towns, why?
Probably because they haven't...
Again, you see pockets of other vendors there, and I think, you know, I don't know enough about all the vendors to say, but I think, you know, maybe there's, you know, a loyalty to a certain vendor that's been able to comply with whatever their needs are. You know, I can't speak to that, but...
Some of the cities play different politics. Is that a nice way to put it?
Well, and he probably nailed it before money.
Yeah, I'm a cynic.
I mean, city...
True. Well, that did.
So, there's our CAD upgrade requests. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. The other new item is a license plate reader, and I believe I provided a background on that. License plate readers, also known as LPRs, have been around for years and years. Truth be told, I had proposed this several years ago to the commission, and it was not supported by them, and that's why you never saw the request before, out of concern for privacy issues. Because what happens is, there's a camera system on a car. Some people may have heard of it being used to get tax scofflaws or parking ticket scofflaws. It goes around, and there's a camera attached to a motor vehicle, or it's handheld, or it could be a stationary unit. We're asking for one that's mounted on a patrol vehicle. But the capabilities are such that the cameras read a license plate, and it's connected to state information systems that will feed back to the officer in the patrol car certain information, specific to that vehicle or the registered owner of that vehicle. So, one of the things you keep in mind is, just because it's registered to Jeff Hutchinson doesn't mean he's driving it. So, if it comes back that the driver's wanted for murder, you don't just open up, open fire on the car. It might be his child driving, or his wife, or something like that. But what it does is, it provides a level of officer safety for the officers who are walking up on a car and might know something that they didn't otherwise know before. So, it would say something as simple as, this car is unregistered. The car's not insured, the registered operator has a suspended license, or they're wanted. More importantly, you can enter, certain agencies can enter vehicle information that they're looking for. Be on the lookout for this vehicle, it was just involved in a crime in Mansfield, Connecticut, and maybe it was a domestic violence case, maybe it was a shoplifting, something like that. So, they'll enter it in, and it'll pop up for us, and say, hey, this car, you know, that's parked in front of Walmart, did six shopliftings in Branford and East Haven recently. So, the commission's initial concern was, hey, wait a minute, it's collecting all this information, it dumps it into a server, because it's a searchable database. So, let's say an incident occurs in Guilford, and you wanna see, you know, what the, what the LPR picked up, you can go and search and say, hey, did you see any black SUVs with a partial license 123? Commission's concern was, how long are we keeping that information, and, you know, how's it gonna be purged? And, you know, I assured them that, number one, through our Kalia accreditation requirements, we have requirements that, we purge intelligence information within certain periods of time. There's FOI requirements within the state that explain how long, a minimum amount of time you need to keep things. So, I assured them that there would be a policy in place that didn't keep this stuff for 20 years, so we can go back and say, you know, Mr. Mazza was driving near the Walmart 20 years ago, and, you know, he's a suspect in something, but, you know, it's, they were concerned about the privacy and the maintaining of public information for long periods of time, and I assured them that that would not happen.
Would this be used like red light cameras?
It's not the same thing. We wouldn't use it to, you know, it's on a patrol car, so the officer's driving around. If an officer sees someone go through a...
But it kicks up that it's an unregistered car, I mean, that's a violation, right?
Oh, yeah, but you'd have to pull them over and verify, and you'd check their records, and...
But that would initiate...
So, it's not an automatic issuance...
My point is, that would initiate that process, it could initiate that...
It could. It'd initiate a motor vehicle stop, potentially, sure. But we won't use the camera and see that the car drove by and it shows unregistered, and just send a ticket to somebody. That's unlike the red light cameras, where that just generates automatic tickets.
Would it pick up an out-of-state plate for a resident in town?
Would it pick up an out-of...
In other words, Vermont plate or Florida plate, somebody losing, Guilf, devoid property tax.
I don't think it has that capability. I'd have to check, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Because it would have, there would have to be some database that showed who's living in town, and, yeah. I'm not su, I wouldn't think so, but I would, I could check and see.
Does it connect to out-of-state license, license register?
Yes, whatever Connecticut connects with, it can tie in, or especially when there's just wanted information on a vehicle, or, you know, in this day and age, obviously, with homeland security issues, it's important. You know, the Oklahoma City bomber was caught on a motor vehicle stop, so, it's, I'm not using that alarm, alarmist techniques, I'm just saying that it's a valuable tool, and I think it's gonna do us a lot of good for the guys out there to grab someone they otherwise might miss.
So, the commission is on board with this now?
Correct.
Is there an annual fee or something to connect to this database?
No, there's a maintenance on the equipment, and that's, I wouldn't put in this, it would be, so the first year's included, so after that, I believe, the one that we got the number from was about $1,700, I believe. But again, just like the CAD, I'd look at other systems to see what our options are. This is the, you know, on the higher end of what we'd be looking at, so it's potential that the number would go down.
Okay.
So, that's it for this year, and then moving out, the only thing that was added is the driveway repair for next year. We had a quote, and the number that I put in there is simply a quote that was provided by a private vendor, because our driveway's 20 years old again and deteriorating pretty rapidly. This isn't one of those, you know, I got giant potholes and we need to replace it tomorrow, but in the interest of putting a plan in place, I threw that number in there based on the estimate, and had conversations with Mr. Portley also, and he'd explained to me that he might be putting in some substantial requests for driveway replacements around town, and if that happens, maybe we piggyback on that and see if we can reduce the cost, or maybe Public Works does some, some of the prep work, and we just have someone else pay for it. I don't know. That number is just a full in-out for a private vendor to get the job done.
Okay.
And that's out for next year, and, you know, I'm sure we could work to accommodate whatever needs the town has, or push it out, or... And that's really it for new stuff, other than the reductions I discussed in the vehicle needs, and some of the vehicle components, and I can go through each year if you'd like, but it's really just vehicles.
Unless we have questions on that, we'll open it up.
Does the license plate reader, is that for one car, or is that for all the cars?
One car.
That's one car. So, you'd wanna get multiple, you wouldn't want more than one car.
Right now, we're just, well, right now, we're just looking for one. It's a, it's a pretty expensive unit, so, you know, I wasn't, and I think it might be a good idea to say, see, hey, how is this thing working, rather than buy a whole bunch of them. If it's not working for us, if it's not doing what we need it to do, I'd hate to have three units on the cars.
Are you all done? Are you set?
I have one last question. The bulletproof vests I noticed aren't in here, did you get your bulletproof vests, or did you get dropped off?
Those were in for this year, so they're gonna be purchased, the ones that we're wearing now, there's a large number that expire about January, so we're looking at replacing those, and those will be replaced before the end of this fiscal year. And then, the reason there's not a large number in for the next year is because we replace one, two, three at a time, and those aren't necessarily elevating to the level of capital expenditure.
It's hard to believe the station is 20 years old.
That is very hard to believe.
I get younger every year, and the station is 20 years old. I don't know. Is it 20 years? I remember when we dedicated that, yeah?
Yeah. I remember moving my boxes.
You had a question?
Well, I just, I noticed license plate readers, you had mentioned that some of them are stationary. How would that...
What happens is, sometimes the town will install them on entry points to the town. It will pick up everybody coming into your town, and it will give an alert if somebody comes in that's wanted, or...
Also, this reader automatically requests the data on every license plate it reads?
Correct.
So, anytime it's behind you?
It's not necessarily behind, it's got a wide, wide angle, it doesn't need to be behind you. It could be next to you, in front of you, above you.
Scary technology. Can you imagine?
Yeah, these have been around forever, these have been around a long time.
So, the SUVs have been quite successful.
Yeah, there's been a couple of mechanical issues with the new, with the new model. There were some recalls due to catalytic converters that they've been covering. One of the cars has had a steering box issue that was repaired, but other than that, Jack, mostly, mostly some minor stuff, and things they're making better. There were, there were headlight issues with the first year's model, and they changed the headlights, because for some reason, the left front headlight kept blowing out in all the cars, and so they changed some sort of, gave an upgrade to it that was preventing that.
You mentioned at the beginning of the reader question again, that last time you suggested that the commission was not in favor. Is the commission in favor of this?
Yes, they are, yeah. I wouldn't be here, yes.
You're gonna ask.
Yeah, I made sure of that, and, you know, there were, I understand the concerns, they, you know, they're speaking for the public, and they're, they wanna make sure that, you know, we're not overstepping what we should be doing here, we're not, we're not J. Edgar Hoover, we're not building up files on everybody, but it really is a useful tool in crime...
He admitted that he was doing it now.
Admitted what? I don't have personal knowledge of that.
He's too young for that.
Insight.
I know the guy's name, that's all.
Okay, any other questions for the police department and the chief? All right. Thank you, chief.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Okay, moving along, we have Parks and Recreation. Rick Mede. Can you bring your chairman along with you?
Yeah, Jeff Tanners is here, and Tony Inocelli.
Tony Inocelli, good, okay. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir.
Okay, Rick, how do you wanna start?
I guess we'll go through next year's highlights. Some of these things, I think, have been in the budget, have been already maybe approved through the five-year process we've gone through, but I resubmit them, a couple of them, anyway. One thing I wanna mention is, from an equipment standpoint, I think we had in a Ford F-50, 550 dump truck, we put it in last year for, I think, $100, $102,000. We revised that down to $85,000, based on the truck we just purchased this year, the price came in lower than what we had originally budgeted last year, so we dropped that down. And that includes a stainless steel bed that we think is very important, and, you know, same thing Public Works is doing, pretty much.
Right.
And so, we revised that down. The multi-purpose utility vehicle, I think we had in at $22,000, that got raised up a little bit to 30. It's to replace the current ATV that we use for plowing sidewalks. This multi-purpose vehicle would have more capability. We can get a plow on it, a small bucket, have a little dump bed on the back, where we can put our salt, sulters, and extra salt, and so on, and it can have a leaf blower, snow blower, a lot of attachments that we can put on it, so it'd be a really multi-use vehicle. And then, also new next year for equipment is replacing GU-56, it's an F-150. The Public Works guys told us that we really need to replace it, the bomb is riding out of that truck. It's, well, it kinda goes into the 15-year plan, it'll be 15, 16 years old by the time we replace it. And also new next year, we have a 48-inch walk-behind mower for $8,500. A lot of that, the use for that mower would be at the high school, the new athletic fields. There are a lot of very steep banks that we, there's no way we can mow them with sit-down rider mowers. They're very, very steep, so a lot of it, we're gonna have to do with just weed whacking. There are areas we'd be able to do with a walk-behind mower that we can't do with a rider. And so, we've got that brand-new, beautiful complex, the fields are gonna look great, and we wanna make sure the banks around the fields, we can keep up with, and not have them just be weeds or tall grass that we can't get to. So, we need the proper equipment to be able to take care of those. I think that's it for equipment for next year, and then for projects, I believe it's, the $75,000's already been approved for the decking at Jacobs Beach, and also the, replacing the community center roof. What is new is the $20,000 for Lake Quantipog weed removal, Joe's aware...
Rick, can I just stop you, the decking for Jacobs Beach?
Yeah.
I thought we were finished with that.
No, it was in for next year. For, that's extending it for the potential future shade structure, that we're gonna put like a temporary tent structure down there. I think it's approved in the last year's budget.
Were we talking about that damn shade structure?
Well, it's gonna be temporary, it's gonna be a tent.
Okay.
It's gonna go up and come down.
Okay.
Each year, yeah. This is just the decking for that.
Okay. So, is that why we need to rename the title of that project to decking for temporary shade structure?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay, that makes more sense.
That's what I have on here, yeah, I put Jacobs Beach decking for shade structure, yeah.
Okay.
Or you wanna say temporary tent, if you wanna call it, but...
But it's still just the decking.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the $20,000 for the Lake Quantipog weed removal, we've been working on a state grant, it's a $68,000 project, it's eliminate invasive weeds at Lake Quantipog. Kevin McGee, Greg Bugbee, and I put together a grant that was submitted last Monday, I believe, it was handed in. And the town, it's $68,000, but we have to do 30, it's matching grants, we have to do $34,000. We're putting 20 into the budget, there's gonna be in-kind service that we can put into that, we have a couple other small grants, Guilford Foundation, we're looking to get a little bit of money from, Choate is gonna donate some money toward this. So, the financial contribution from the town would be $20,000, and this is to eliminate about 18 acres of invasive weeds. It's in the beach area, the north end, the boat launch, and then about, I think, 12, 15 acres in the north end of the lake, and four or five acres around the middle of the lake, where there's a big section of invasive weeds. These have all been identified by Greg Bugbee, who's an expert on this stuff, and he's identified the locations where these weeds are, and it's only invasive weeds that we can go after. And so, that would be our portion of, to get that $68,000 project, we're asking for $60,000 for that.
I think it's important to reinforce the fact that we're not taking on the burden or the responsibility for the entire Lake Quantipog, which is a state, Lake Quantipog.
Yeah.
That's about 89 acres. We're not doing that. We're doing, we're responsible for.
I believe that the budget cuts that were announced the other day call for cutting all programs for that, just so you know.
Interesting, yeah, it's a deadline last Monday, we just put it in. Well, if we just, we have...
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure the state, that's one of the things they've eliminated.
Yeah, well, then we need to focus on what we can get done for $20,000, if we still get, you know, the money in our budget to do it. We know we have to do the beach, the beach is definitely a problem, the plan, they're supposed to put bed-thick barriers down, they're like mats, or tarps almost, kinda thing, that would go down and help suffocate the weeds. So, at the very least, we need to do that, and whatever else we can do on other parts of the lake. Also, we put in for next year, the painting, the community center interior and exterior, as you all know, it's probably one of the most used buildings in town, other than schools, I guess, and it's, was built in 1993. We've never had the exterior painted, we've had some rooms painted in the interior, but we had a contractor come in and give us a price to do all of it, and that's the number we have in there. The other one is the Upper Cox North Soccer Field. We have $150,000 currently bonded for that project. That was to do the south field, if you go up to Upper Cox, the south is one to the left. And we, we got donations from all the youth sports groups to hire, Malone McBroom has been going up there and doing a study for us, they're gonna write the specs and, you know, put together specifications for us to go out to bid. But as they're up there, they strongly recommended we should also do the north field, which was not our original plan. The plan was to regrade the south field, irrigate both fields, but not regrade the north field. But as they go up there, they're shooting grades, they said we really should do that north field also. Part of that, the contributing factor to that was the drought we had this year. That field got so bad, we had to shut it down mid-season, mid-fall. We had to get the high school soccer team off there for their practices, all the youth soccer teams, we shut the field down, probably went, Tony, early October, maybe, and we had to move to other fields. The field was in such bad condition, we were worried about somebody getting hurt, it was was in such bad condition, we were worried about somebody getting hurt. It was very compacted, places where they could twist their ankles and so on. So we had, we shut it down. So I think the drought really exacerbated the problem up there. And so it's been recommended to the field committee, they recommended to the Parks and Rec Commission that we put the money in to do both fields and get it, get it totally done instead of just the south field. So that would be an additional sixty-eight thousand, that would be include with the one hundred and fifty thousand currently budgeted. That would include irrigating both fields, it'd be a new irrigation pump that we, has been determined that we need. And it would be regrading both fields and then seeding them. It would not be sod, it'd be seeding both fields. And the plan would, if this gets approved, would be to do this, this coming summer. It's our understanding that two new fields at the high school will be online by then, so we would have places for these other teams to practice meanwhile until this, this other one comes online. I think those are the highlights for, for next year. Do you want me to go into the following years, just kind of highlight different things, or how do you want to do that?
Yeah, you can just.
Okay. Well, mostly, if you could look again at the vehicles, vehicles are pretty much on the fifteen-year plan. Some of the mowers and other equipment we're looking to replace will be a little bit older than fifteen years, some cases nineteen, nineteen years, eighteen, nineteen. And we wouldn't be asking for them if, if they didn't have to replace. The trucks that we have, the bottoms are rotting out, the beds are rotting out. We've replaced beds once or twice on almost all the vehicles that we have. But beyond that, you know, the motors start to go and we start putting so much into maintenance, it's not worth putting any more money into them. A couple of the buses we have in there, we now own the buses. We used to lease them, as you know, through the Greater New Haven Transit District. They're not leasing anymore. So in the future, if we want to get a bus, we have to purchase it. But again, they'll be twelve, fifteen years old by the time we, we start replacing them.
Rick, refresh my memory, how many miles a year we put on these buses?
Oh, boy, let me think.
Well, if you can, when, when you present your budget, maybe you can have those numbers.
Yeah, I'll get those. I'd be guessing to tell you I don't have them at the top of my head, but they're used, I mean, you know, they're going.
I know they're used daily, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be a lot of miles.
I'll get the numbers. I will find that out, Joe, and I can send you an email if you want. Okay. Let me see what other highlights. I think on the, on the projects for next year, it's seventeen eighteen, the year after next, we have redoing the skate park, which is also pickleball courts. Pickleball has grown like exponentially. When we started that about five or six years ago, we had six people, we have seventy-five right now playing, all seniors. And we have courts, two up at Binder Park, four at Adams, two at Lakes. And then they come inside in the community center and they play in the large room there. We also, in the winter, have a couple courts at the racket club that we're gonna be renting through the racket club. And it's going off the wall. Pickleball's gotten very, very popular.
Well, not at all.
Yeah. So the skate park, though, the, up there where we have the two pickleball courts, there's some major cracks. They're three inches deep, two inches wide. That was built in two thousand and four. It's been recommended that we replace it with post-tension concrete, where we put it right over the existing court. We don't have to grind it up or, you know, destroy it. We can use what's there, go right over the top. I've been told the post-tension concrete could last twenty to thirty years. So that'll, it'll last a lifetime, basically, you know, generation plus when we replace that. We also have in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which we may end up moving up a year, but for now, that's where it is for the Adams tennis courts. We have the same problem there with the cracks getting pretty extensive there. We are planning in next year's budget to, out of our operating budget, to repair the cracks. We should be able to get three years out of that, but at that point, we should redo them. And we would also do the post-tension concrete, which is a more long-term solution than the asphalt is. So that, you'll see that's in there for eighty-five thousand in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. Probably our, following on the heels of what Jim Portley was just talking about, in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, we have, we had put in the budget a few years ago of building a, a metal storage building up at Binder Park to help store some of our equipment. We have rethought that. Instead of just a metal storage building, we need a regular, we need another building for all of our parks' equipment. I know Public Works has been asking for a couple of years that we'd like to take the bays that we have down at forty-seven driveway. They need more space for their stuff. We walked through with the commissioners, many commissioners that have never been in there, and I have to say that they were pretty shocked that our maintenance guys have no place to eat lunch. They're eating lunch in a garage. Same place where they're cutting wood, there's sawdust all over the place. They're painting, there's paint fumes, there's gas fumes, that's where their trucks are parked. They're eating lunch in a garage. They have no bathroom facility. Their hand washing sink is a spigot coming out of the wall and it empties into a five-gallon pail. It's really not appropriate conditions for them. We're clearly running out of space.
But they're down at the Public Works facilities. Can't they share the lunchroom facilities and bathroom facilities with the Public Works guys? I mean, you know, you're literally.
They, they do, Public Works leaves at three-thirty, our guys are there until four. So, I mean, after that.
I'm talking about lunch hours and stuff.
Tony, you wanna comment on that?
It's just tough. We, they do share a lot of stuff with us, but you're talking, I don't know how many are over there, eighteen guys plus, plus our eight or nine throughout the season. We take lunches, we're not down there nine months out of the year, you know, we're out and about, we stay where we are. But as far as security reasons, they don't want to give a key out for us to come in after hours. So if it's after four o'clock, we have to go to the rec center. I mean, after three-thirty, excuse me. And as, as far as eating area, it's barely enough room for all other guys. And again, they're out and about, we're out and about most of the time. But as far as the next three months, you know, it's very cramped down there. And it's tough to invade into somebody else's, you know, and we have a lot of part-time guys that come and go. And, you know, our base crew knows them for a long time, so we have a lot of trust between us. But, you know, they have open lockers and personal belongings in lockers and stuff. And I, I think the feeling that I've gotten from them is that they don't really want people going in and out of their facility. But maybe something can be arranged. You know, that's not my call. I just know that our conditions at our garage are pretty bad currently.
Yeah, I'm sure we can work something out one time.
That's, I think the bigger issue, though, is we're just out of space and we really need a six-bay garage.
Yeah, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, but to paint the picture you painted was.
Well, it's part of, I'm going into the part two of that. And so we're just running out of space and Jim, Jim Portley gave me an estimate of, for a six-bay garage, two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is room across the parking lot from, from, kind of across from where A and W is there. That's a town property there. Jim thought there's a possibility we could put a six-bay garage in there. He kind of marked it on a map for me. With that, we also would have a, I guess you'd call it like a freestanding carport. We'd be able to park our buses under in the winter. We have in the past.
You mean where your, your buses are now? Where you park them and where the trailers used to be?
Well, kind of in that area, but a little bit toward the homes, they're a little bit closer, yeah, west of there a little bit, where it is now. The buses, we used to be able to park under an area that they had, near that salt storage building, they had an overhang where they have their sanders. That's coming down, I guess. It's falling apart, it's coming down, and they're not planning on replacing that. So we would, with the new building, we would also have a, an overhang thing where we could park the buses. The winter, it's pretty imperative that we have to have a place to put them. I mean, you know, gotta clear the snow off before they drive and there's snow on top of those. Right now, they drive to the community center and we have our custodian go up with a, like a roof rake and clear them off. But we, they just hope as they're driving there, the snow to start flying off, because it's a law, you can't drive with that stuff on the roof anymore. So we have to clear it off. But if we have.
Okay, but would you want to put this in year twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and yet you try to make a case for your guys, which I don't blame you because, you know, you painted the picture that they were eating around sawdust and might have washed their hands in a bucket, which our HR department would be pretty upset if they heard this and if it was on a daily basis. But for the questioning, we find out that we, they can share the space with Public Works. But if it's such conditions as you express, why do you want to wait two years to do this?
I, we just, we can move it up. I think we were thinking that, you know, there's so many other projects we have in here. We didn't want to top load and have a whole bunch of things all at once. You know, we talked to the guys, tried to get by another couple of years.
The commission should look at your priorities. I mean, to me, my men would come first.
Yeah, I would agree. We were thinking of a comprehensive solution.
Right.
The trucks and the bays and also the, the human needs as well.
The way I would address that is I would talk to the director of Public Works and our supervisor and see if we can make accommodations for your men. And then maybe you can push out this project.
Right. Well, yeah, we can work on that part of it, is, you know, to try to get some solutions, temporary solutions. We're just trying to look at long range. What do we need to do down there? But again, it's, a lot of it's a space issue, that we just need more room.
And the long-range plans, what eliminated Bitner?
Why what eliminated Bitner?
It makes more sense down there because that's where the mechanics are, the gas pumps are there, everything is there down at forty-seven driveway.
Yeah, we brought this argument up last year, I think, or two years ago, and you guys didn't like that.
Right.
Does this timing fall in place with what Jim was saying about moving the salt shed and putting the wash station in? They're reconfiguring, was that where this comes into play at that time?
I don't know what.
But now that I heard what the director of engineering's presented to you, there, there could be a comprehensive solution to it as well.
Sounds like a little more conversation.
We have some needs.
Between departments, between.
Certainly does.
Exactly, exactly. And I would agree with what Jim Portley said, if not there, where? And that, that's the challenge in this town, where?
Well, to Gary's point, though, I mean, if we've got a situation that's not perfect and can be improved, do we want to keep adding to it?
Yeah. Yeah, my, my concern would be if we're talking twenty twenty, is there any thought about the future of Public Works? I mean, it's come up time and again about eventually moving Public Works. I mean, and, and like you say, I mean, are we.
Or an auxiliary or something.
Or an auxiliary. And if there's, if we're going to develop a comprehensive plan, should we be thinking about a different location for some of that stuff?
Yeah, I think we have to do a needs assessment first. You know, what, what do we need based on the equipment that we do have and the personnel that we do have there? And not only the needs for the immediate future, but going out a few years after it's built as well. And then find a comprehensive plan with Public Works, which would include possibly a new location. And we can't factor that out of the equation.
Right.
But that's, that would be a difficult situation.
Well, like Jim said, where?
I'd have no problem with that. But that, that would be a real challenge in this town. Who's willing?
It's always a challenge because we're running out of space.
Yeah, well.
We're running out of land, we're running out of good locations. We realized that when we looked around originally for a site for a new high school.
Yep.
There are, there were no, you know, legitimate sites. But.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't explore it.
Yeah, I mean, but we need to, maybe we need to think a little bit bigger and a little bit wider in our concerns. But I would suggest that you get together with Jim on these other issues. Oh, yeah, yeah. Agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially the lunch, I mean, and that kind of stuff. I mean, that's just not right.
Yeah, guys shouldn't be washing their hands in a five-gallon bucket.
We gotta have more cooperation between.
No, it's a sink, but it, but it empties into a five-gallon bucket.
That's just wrong, that's just wrong. I mean, even if, you know, Public Works has to look into expanding their facility over there, I mean, you just, you can't have that , not even for a year.
We would agree.
Okay, you want to continue?
In eighteen nineteen, we had replacing the high school synthetic field. That's with some conversation with the school superintendent that we would expect they were gonna put half the cost in there. It's about a five-hundred thousand dollar item. We put in for two-hundred and fifty thousand. And it will be pretty much, you know, beyond its useful life at that point. It's an eight-year warranty. We're in our eighth year right now, I believe, with it. And so we're hoping to get twelve, fifteen years possibly out of it. But it will have to be replaced. And so we have that in there for eighteen nineteen. We do, there is some maintenance we do on it to try to keep it up. We have a contract with a company now that comes and they, twice a year, they, they broom it and they, they go through it with like a giant magnet, a pick of any metal, which amazingly, you get a little baggie full of bobby pins, a lot of bobby pins in there and little spikes and nuts and bolts that come off the, the goals and so on. But they do that. We've got that twice a year happening. And they fluff up the, the rubber and if, the areas where we need more, they add more. And they, it basically brooms the field and it'll, it'll extend the life of it. So we're doing that twice a year now with the contractor. But at some point, it has to get replaced. And so that would be shared with the board of ed.
I don't even want to have that conversation about all the issues.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there are different surfaces now. And, you know, I know with the new field, we're kind of looking, the field committee's looking into that. I think, anything, can you think of Jack?
Any, any other questions for Rick, Public Commission? Okay, all right. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sheila, we want to leave information systems for later.
Yes, libraries.
Yeah, we'll do the library.
What's that?
You're up, library.
Is there any property along, we extend Baldwin over to Loop Seventy-Seven, is there any property over there?
That's, that's.
Hello, hello.
No.
Hello.
Where I think it belongs. The problem is the road and, you know, it's.
Okay. Library directors, Bob McCool, how you doing?
We're good. How are you doing? We're the last ones. That's not so great, right?
Well, we're.
I'll be quick.
Either worn out or we're just getting up to speed, so take your pick. Actually, not the last ones. We have information systems.
Oh, okay. Do I just start talking?
You start.
Okay, all right.
Start talking any time you want.
Okay. I have three separate requests. The first one is the one that we have had since the beginning of our five-year plan cycle, and it has really been very wonderful for us. And that is the ongoing computer replacement plan that, that we are, we have implemented in the library, which funds come from various sources, the friends, the, our operating budget, but also from the allocation in the capital request. And we asked for ten thousand six hundred dollars. That is, this is for.
Twenty-one.
Twenty, is it twenty twenty-one? I'm sorry, because I just have it, it says, yeah, seventeen through twenty-one. So this is the, this is the fifth, the newest fifth year, right? Okay, so twenty twenty-one. Rob McCool is the assistant director and head of adult services. So if you want to ask any, I mean, I can answer them too for some, in some cases, but he's dealing with it on a regular basis. So if you want more depth, we're here. Otherwise, I'll move on to the next one.
Okay.
All right.
We're okay.
All right. Okay. This is, the next request involves the slate roof and the flat roof. Last year, we had to spend a significant amount of money on roof repairs. And at that point, I was very lucky to have the volunteer help of Guilford resident Tom Gins, Jr., who owns Seal Tight Roofing. And he gave me some very excellent free advice about how, how to go forward with roof maintenance. And under his direction, we put in money for the fiscal, for the current year for roof inspections for both the flat membrane roof and the slate roof. And so I am carrying those requests. I, I just spoke with him when I was preparing this and I'm putting through the same requests for, on a regular basis now, because, for, for starting with the next fiscal year. So this was a, it was new in the year that we're in now, fifteen, sixteen. So I put it in for sixteen, seventeen, because he said, regular inspections of the flat roof, two of them a year, and then inspection of the slate roof with needed repairs, if necessary, is a much better way to go than waiting till things get so expensive that you can violate particularly the warranty on the membrane roof, which we do have. It's through the Carlisle Company.
Wouldn't this, I'll direct us to Sheila, wouldn't this just be a maintenance item rather than a capital item?
Our threshold is five thousand dollars. It could be a maintenance item and then it would show up in.
In their operating budget rather than capital.
It would be the same concept, though. We, we would just give them a check. That's what we do for the operating and for this as well. Or do we.
we do for the operating, and for this as well, or do we actually?
I haven't billed it yet.
Yeah.
Because I haven't, I'm in the process of getting the company to do it, so we haven't actually had the inspections yet for the fiscal year that we're in. So I thought it was outside of the maintenance operations money, but I get mixed up in the various categories myself.
You know, it really almost makes sense to eliminate library as a capital department and just have it all in their, in the operating budget, because it's really just a subsidy that we make to the library.
Yeah, we probably should have this discussion, because maybe, not today, though we could, unless we're gonna do major improvements to the roof, or, you know, major improvements to the building itself. But you're right, a lot of this stuff should be in the operating section and not capital.
I mean, it does qualify.
Unless you're gonna replace all the carpeting, or, you know, knock down a wall. To me, that's, the rest is just general maintenance.
Well, I'm happy to do it, I just need direction, so whatever, you know.
Well, why don't you continue with the rest, and then we can talk about it.
And then, a request for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, is splitting up interior painting, the first floor and then the second floor, because by then, the new library will be ten years old, and, you know, I.
We just went through the, all over the building.
I'm sorry to, to say, I mean, it's.
You're right, everything's aging.
It's a great thing, but by then, the walls will need to be painted. We do, we do some painting now, but I'm talking about a complete paint job, so I figured we could do one floor one year and one floor the next year. So that's, that's it.
Okay. Anybody wish to weigh in, any questions? Thank you.
Okay, so for the things that affect the preparation of the budget for next year, I'll follow up with Sheila and see what.
When you come back here in January, for the operating budget, we'll have this ironed out.
All right.
Okay?
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
If you follow us in the operating budget, she'll miss the opportunity to see us in November.
I'm sure there'll be other opportunities.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You wanna take us through the information, the sure department?
Sure. You don't have the painting one? This is also another budget that kind of, you know, goes between capital and operating, because in the IT operating budget, there is a line item for computer hardware and computer software, and so, but what we found is that things that reoccur every year, that we put in every year, like the replacement printers, they tend to fall into the capital, although it's below the threshold that we, I require a five thousand dollars. So we can rethink that as well, especially when we're looking at, there's quite a few projects right now that are slated for general fund capital, so this may be one that moves into the operating budget, the printers, and fifteen hundred dollars a year, it's a placeholder as well. Printers that we use here are expensive, they're not the ninety-nine-dollar type that we all buy at home, so it doesn't buy that many printers. There's, I'm gonna skip over the next two and go back to them, and go down to the laptops established with electronic polling places. That's a registrar of voters' request, it was in last year's plan, and we're just continuing it for this year. In fact, I think last year's plan, they didn't have it in seventeen, oh, what they've done is they moved it up a year, from eighteen to seventeen. And then the replacement PCs is, again, something we've been continuing for years, we have, we only have the ability.
Could you just stop for a second? Remind us, what is the need for those laptops at the polling places?
I believe that was a state requirement, that was a request from the registrar, and their backup.
Might be that same-day voting now.
Should give you more detail.
That they do downstairs, the same-day registration? Yeah, they have to come to town for it for that.
It's a checklist program for the five polling places, and ten laptops for five polling places. And I'm gonna get some more information on this, because as we put this together, I thought the price of thirty-five hundred seemed pretty cheap.
Yeah, that seems low.
For ten laptops.
Three fifty a piece.
That's, it's possible. It may, they may just be, you know, base model, only, you know, used to run the software, but I will provide more information from you. I know this is the second year, though, it's just been moved up. Okay.
I don't know where they got that price from. Okay, I'm sorry.
Of course, there's another state mandate, they're obviously.
Unfunded mandate.
They're giving us the money to pay for this, right?
Oh, yeah, sure. Probably have to buy it from them, too.
Right.
The replacement PCs, this is a program that we've been working on for ten years at least. We can only deploy eight or ten computers a year, and so that's how we spread them out. And it's become an issue, because many of the departments have different operating systems and different versions of Windows and software. So as you know, we've, we've had Bloom Shapiro put together our IT plan, and this may be addressed as part of that plan. But for now, we're going to keep the placeholder of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Also, in the backup is the inventory of all of our hardware, our desktops, laptops, and servers, so you can see what we have and the configurations of each of those computers that we currently have, and you'll see they're very different. And then, the new items, one of them is actually, almost ended up in the engineering public works budget, because it's for backscanning of all of the documents that we're now doing electronically, taking in electronically at Town Hall South, the permits, the maps, just many years' worth of Town Hall South documents that we now wanna scan into the system that we've purchased through Munis. We have the ability, I think, Joe, you've seen it before on the general ledger side, when you ask, have you paid, you know, what was this bill for? We can actually go and click on it right on the, on the system and see the bill, it pops up. So it eliminates having to go into the file cabinet or into the basement to try to find the backup document, it will all be there on Munis at a click of a button. But it's time-consuming, and there's.